Where's he taking you?
My dog won't sleep.
Thanks for coming. I didn't know what you looked like. I was gonna call like. Crazy.
I think so.
Thirty seven.
I see a little.
One to large, look like they deals now.
No, it's that. A lot of it. Crazy.
I did three lawnmower, go on the riding mower. And if the weather's plugged it up and stories of field.
Yeah. Back in school project. Want to. Love everything.
But yeah, where do we go? I went and cleaned up with timely game. Up the rain.
I had received last week. This huge area. Really. Spent all sorts of money for it, developed for doing it. And. The most recent patch fire on, it's supposed to take pretty high rates. Okay. Although it would have been better if bear hadn't walked up through it. Bear walked up through them, followed the berry path, saw the way through it. Would you like it? Let's say we get a.
A week.
We didn't plant grass this weekend, it's gonna rain the whole week, you know what I'm gonna say?
Carol, we ready?
Um, yes, I'm just writing down.
Okay, let me know when you get that all written down.
Thank you for the bigger plants. Whoever got them there.
Thought this rubber band I ever thought.
I know, I took that line out. Now I know why I didn't read them all. Some stuff, look at all. Notes and environment. Put papers, find the order to comply.
Okay, I think I have a little.
All right.
A little bit of. Um, coming up, there's branding. Um. You don't see the rain on.
Maybe. Another page.
I don't see him.
I don't see him either. Either, either.
Rainey, you're getting feedback, so.
Yeah, I just had to mute my, I'm controlling the Zoom on a different device. But yeah, I don't, he's, he's not on this meeting, but everyone who gets automatically let in in this, in this meeting, so.
Good job.
So.
I think the wind is over. Hold on, keep on. It's on, wait, it's on. Hey Ray, can you unmute if you're on, does that you're there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, without lock to.
I thought I had a few minutes.
All right. As soon as you count.
This is ever. Good man, go on.
There was here.
I have all my. That's what. I'll. Who? That was good.
All right, let's call the meeting to order, please. Put the record marker, he's excused. First item on the agenda, consideration of the meeting minutes for August twenty third, twenty twenty three. She won't hear Daniel wrote on the minutes.
Can I make one, then we do that at the end, because it's that.
Okay, move in this pass over the minutes, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
You've got it. Mark.
I'm glad that you're here.
Now, you don't want to. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, thanks for having us. My name is Chase Crowbar, I'm the civil works, representing the current applicant of one thirty nine, one forty one Main Street. You've got it. Uh, we were here last month in front of you, uh, under board. We received comments from Ray Culver, the town engineer, and we've addressed all those comments. We supplied him and. Faculty here in town with those, and that's what's in your package tonight. And. We've updated everything, we are asking for four waivers. Uh, those waivers being. And the four waivers come from comment from Ray. One of the, one of those, one that we discussed last month, and the other three are comments from Ray. We, we, we're providing the waivers if the board feels that it's be necessary to ask to request a waiver, or we can just rescind the waiver. If the board doesn't feel that. So waivers are in your package tonight. The first waiver is to allow the road building to be five foot from the side yard, where a ten foot would be required. So this one, um, we would verify if this is required for waivers, so this property does.
Tomorrow we get into changes you've made, okay, then we're gonna ask you questions.
You want us to go through Ray's.
Get weather, go to that.
Yep, um, so number one, provide permits that have been required by N H D O T. We have coordinated with N H D O T, Ray has, um. Reached out to them as well and coordinated with them. They indicated that a driveway permit is not required, but an excavation permit is after, um, site plan approval. And during the building permit phase, the excavation permit will be applied for and obtained.
Right, and I think that I just received is that the verification of that from D O T.
Okay.
So we're happy with, um, and I guess we're happy with what we have proposed in the excavation project.
Uh, D O T, this is from the topic, did ask us to show the right of way on the plans. We have revised that, the right way now, we've done the plans on the existing condition and on the site drawing and some other plans of the place set. They did ask us, due to the sight line, um. That parking space right at the corner of church in Main Street to be striped and, you know, parking. So we added that no parking sign, and we had striping to that area. That is shown on sheet five. At the corner of a church, I mean. So the street parking will go from two spaces to three spaces. Right, confirmation for the appropriate utility authorities. We are in coordination with, uh, the electric pull off. That's still ongoing, but we have been talking to them. Uh, add the following sentence to note ten, that note, that note's been added, or that sentence been added. Number four is the same, add, add a note, that has been added as well. Five, we updated the plan based on this comment, was taking the drainage off the demolition plan, we did that, there's no confusion. We've updated saw cut limits for the water and sewer service connections. We updated notes calling out the, uh, street sign, no parking at Coolidge Street, Main Street intersection. We added the. Another note that Ray pointed out about super manhole. Updated a note on sheet four. So ten through thirteen, basically, just update notes, added plans. Then we have, um, a waiver request for the parking space size that we talked at the last meeting about. As part of your package, thank you for the waiver request. The required parking size is one seven, around seventy square feet, you're asking relief for a hundred and sixty two square feet, nine by eighteen. Parking space. The next one was another waiver Ray commented on, so that was the frontage waiver, so the building. The building fronts three streets, Main Street, Coolidge and Church Street. We interpret the regulations as there would be three front setbacks on each of those streets, and then there'd be a rear setback. Uh, Ray pointed out that Church Street and Coolidge Street would be side setbacks. So the building would not need the side setback if Church Street and the Coolidge Street side, um, were to be a side street setback. So that would be a waiver we request if the board finds that we need to leave that tonight.
But just to be clear, we disagree with Ray's, you know, thought process on the side setback versus front setback. But we provided a waiver just in case. You.
All right, Carol.
Um, I think that Ray and I agree on that should be a side setback, although. The planning board will see the advice that we got after consulting with, um, town council about it. Um, and looking at the ordinance that you have the right, right to waive all the mentioned requirements, um, because it's in the village center. So it's up to you.
I, I would agree.
Do that without. Suddenly calming, you know, not having a side setback.
I think, I think I would agree with you with a front village on Main Street, that's front setback, and then get it to a side setbacks.
Okay. Um, next one, point out for a waiver, and we're a question of board on this tonight. So the equipment pads, fence and light pole are considered structures and are located within respective setbacks. So we are asking for a waiver for the, uh, concrete pad, is that is located in a setback. And then the two light poles that are located in a setback in the rear, and the fence that's gonna be along the, uh. The residential abiding property to the north, northwest. Uh, we would be asking waiver for those structures to be in the setback.
And that is one waiver that I want to have prepared for tonight, but definitely do not believe is required. If every street, you know, that has underground utilities, the transformer pads are within setbacks, that's where they go.
Yeah, I think, I think I would agree with you on that.
And.
Depends on the rest of the world.
And I've never heard of any municipality considering a fence as structure.
Is it a fence, a fence, the fences are put from the property lines, I don't know why we need to waive that.
Well, he was considering his structure.
It's some plan review, all fences go to you.
Right.
If it were a residential fence, then I could just let them, um, do what the lines is, you know, put.
I guess the question is how to down every one, but because it's site plan review, fences come under your jurisdiction. Okay, I don't know about the need for a waiver, because who would put a fence ten feet from the property?
Well, you just have to make it the same involved.
Okay, so, uh, to be clear, Ray brought up that the, those are considered structures. And under the ordinance, structures can't be in the setback. So that's, I guess, the question here, is a, is a light pole base, a fence, equipment pads considered structures?
Right.
And if they are, then we have to ask for.
Okay, we'll take, we'll make a vote on that as later on.
Okay. Um, and then seventeen, eighteen, I moved through them individually, but a lot of these are just basic update notes and details.
Yeah.
Um, seventeen, eighteen. Nineteen, they updated. Okay, the required notes, we updated the details. We updated the drainage analysis as, uh. Ray commented on, we are asking for a waiver from the stormwater ordinance. We are increasing peak runoff from the site. We would like to note that the existing conditions now does not have any stormwater mitigation. And the, the impervious area is not being treated. Our proposal now treats, it mitigates the stormwater on site before it discharges into the town municipal own drainage system located on Church Street. But that would be one of the waivers we were asking tonight. And then it was update the inspection and maintenance plan, uh, which we did, we included design specifications for the horse paving asphalt. So if there was need of repairing it, um, the project proponent wouldn't know how to prepare it. Or at least go know where the document is to, uh, refer to on design and preparing the system.
Have any questions?
I kind of do, but I don't, it's more cosmetic, I mean, in the future, like, the location of the light bulb, the same thing. You know, they probably would be a little intrusive on the neighbors at the back, you could find another place to put them.
So we do provide a light, um, old plan, or not like a lighting plan. Uh, it shows that there is no, um, light being emitted onto the neighboring property, those all are down, um. Dark sky compliant, they're pointed down, and it's to really light the parking area from, for the tenants, the residents of the post building.
So there's an LED, the seven or nine bulb LED light?
Yeah, there, the actual detail is on page fifteen.
Yeah, fourteen has the spread.
I got a question for you.
Yes.
You want to waive on a setback, like the Coolidge side. The building, I said that, five feet, ten ten. The roof is about thirty five feet high. So it's up the roof, will I be hitting on the, on the, that property is going over the sidewalk, the street?
I wouldn't expect so, because the roof slopes back towards the parking.
Backside?
Backside.
There'll be no sloping, the roof going towards food.
Not.
And that is where it's, it opens up the roof near the cottage park there. And, and on the cottage level street.
Hundred percent of the roof is sloping towards parking in the back, so maintain it on our whole property.
Yeah, it's hard to say, there's no side elevation of the structure.
Yeah, that'll be in the, the plant side.
The only thing, one, I have one concern. Down your building, it's like sides of cooling place across the street. You put that up on the sidewalk, five feet of sidewalk. Look at the height of the cooling place. Look at the height of that building in Main Street, it's gonna be like a big wall growing down Main Street. That's what I've been trying to fight for years, that create a tunnel effect, kind of link it.
But I think we're twelve or fifteen feet off the sidewalk.
Yes, but the height of elevation. It's gonna be five feet higher than you want out, the sidewalk. If you're approximately, you're not gonna be ground level, it'll be higher. That's mainly through the street, but the height of the building you're gonna put in, cooling place. You combine two together, that could be like one big massive wall going down the street, one street together.
So when we met here, uh, December thirteenth, uh, twenty twenty two, you know, our original, uh, proposal, based on what's allowed per ordinance, is a four story building. And, you know, you could have a, a gable roof, so it would, could be still significantly larger and taller. And from that meeting that, from last December, we wanted to internalize a lot of what was, what we had talked about. So while we were allowable to have four stories, we wanted to, we heard you, and we wanted to reduce it down to the three. And not only did we do that, but we did the, the sloping roof back towards the parking. And it was twofold reasons why we did that, it minimized the height, because the regulations go to the primary eve, not, not to the ridge. So I could have put a gable roof on this, and it could be, have been another twenty, twenty two feet higher. But we heard you, and we wanted to try to have, reduce the scale as best as we can. And snow shed onto the sidewalk was a concern, so what we wanted to do is be able to keep the building further enough, more, further off the, uh, sidewalk than the current buildings have. So we can also have a landscape buffer and some streetscape, but also have that snow shed from the building go back onto the property. So it doesn't fall onto the sidewalk. And also that landscape buffer was going to provide an opportunity for the, the sidewalk snow blower to cast some snow as well. So we tried to internalize a lot of what we heard back in December and minimize, you know, drastically minimize what we had originally were proposing to. Really still stay well within what's allowable for, per zoning.
What do you have for setback from the sidewalk?
Um, so from the front property line, it's five feet, but I think we're fourteen feet off of edge of. Sidewalk.
I'm just thinking of the trees and everything in between the sidewalk and the structure that was not gonna be added, it's too, you know, for, for all the vegetation to grow.
Well, it's, so with our landscape designer, you pick appropriate vegetation.
Have a landscape.
Okay, yeah, I mean, so we're not gonna put maple trees and things of that, oak trees and things like that, but it's this, it's.
I mean, the only thing you could put is like Lombardi poplars, but they're not. I mean, those are the only thing narrow enough to fit in that state.
Yeah, we do have a landscape plan with the, with the proposed motion.
It's on, it's the last page.
Now, the other thing is, we're supposed to have the structures look a little bit more like New England, and, you know, I mean, even if you modify like these side dormers to accommodate more of a even pitch. That would make a better visual appear on some of these. Some of these little peaks. I don't know if you've ever considered that, though.
The side dormers, you say, instead of them being flat?
Yeah, maybe arc them a little bit to give it more of a New England appeal perhaps.
We can do shed roofs on those.
Yeah, and like even the front walkway where it drops down onto the front step, that's gonna be an icy nightmare to maintain too.
Wait, I don't, I don't understand. Before you said new conversation, I. You, what are you saying?
The, the peaks, I mean, it's not really New Englandy, and I thought maybe take those side dormers and, um, make it a more of a peak. You know, to add a little more of a New England flair to them perhaps?
Yeah, so we definitely, we, we changed the, over the last, sometime this summer, we changed the coloring scheme to try to make it more New England and traditional.
Well, it's New England or New Hampshire, New England.
New Hampshire.
There's a big difference. That's the topic of La Corneille, it's probably.
So that was mine, but I know with our, our standards, we're supposed to have them look more New Englandy, and I thought maybe adding more of a peak on some of these, uh. Side dormers, and maybe even off the top where it angles up, you could continue it down, so it kind of better.
Steve?
In case I missed something, why, why does that building have to be right on Main Street? Couldn't you put it on the backside of the lot?
So.
Did we talk about that before?
We did, in December, December thirteenth, when we were at that meeting, is that most streetscapes, you know, city planning wants to have buildings more front loaded and parking hidden in the rear. I mean, that's typical, ti- typical, how, how streetscape feel when you're on a Main Street. So when we were at, uh, that meeting, I, we asked the board pros and cons of what we could do, you know, it's nice that we have the green space. We can move the green space forward, but that the tenant's green space will be along Main Street, where now the tenant's green space can be out back. And then we had discussions back in December that, you know, having the buildings forward and the parking in the rear was what I took away as the consensus as, uh, the most appropriate. Position of the building.
That's probably the only thing I've got a problem with.
So you mentioned, that's the only other problem, and Carol?
Well, I think our ordinance also wanted buildings in the front and parking in the back.
Right, master plan.
That's in the master plan. I mean. Whether that's the result that you want is, I think that that is.
So additional question. Setback in front of the building, setback was five feet to sidewalk. That five feet to sidewalk, I can feeling down to five feet, correct? It'll be ten people, you're setting yourself, totally setback, the sidewalk will be how much?
Uh, just under seventeen.
How much?
Seventeen.
Which means. When raised up under five feet high, that creates still to reach the tunnel effect I'm talking about. Not, you're getting a nice looking belly, but not that, whole concept of Main Street. Looking at a big wall of buildings, right down the whole street, not just you, but all the others, people trying to buy up all the other properties. And we're gonna be looking, we be looking, we looking like downtown La Corneille did, during the, the urban renewal. They totally tracked the whole downtown, not the fight to get it back like the lease dealer. It's not a New England town anymore, it's a bitty suburb of Boston. Unfortunately.
We understand that, uh, we do.
I'm a native, Paul's a native, Bunch was here a native, Steve's a native, but imagine how we feel. A lot of people in town still feel that way. Be a great, not suburb of Boston by doing the way the buildings are coming up and adapted. You, if you meet your criteria, you're within your right to build. Doesn't mean I have to like it, but if you meet your requirements, I have to prove it. In other words, meet all the requirements, I'm not gonna try to stop you. But it's mean I have to like it. Other people here may feel the same way, I don't know. But.
He might not meet the requirements that the waivers is asking for.
Okay.
Because it might not meet the requirements with waivers. Paul?
So I have comments and questions. Where, where are you, are you at with the fire flow analysis, like, it's something we just received?
Yeah, it's, they have it, Ray reviewed it, and it's been signed off by Ron.
Ron has signed off on it, so I had something as of yesterday that I wouldn't say whether it was or not.
Yeah, he just did, I think, yesterday, or.
Definitely. First of all, I think. First of all, I think. I think this is needed. But I think you're cramming a lot onto a smaller lot. I think that personally. Um, I agree with some of Joe's comment, and I think the waivers that you're asking for. Hard to be able to. Try and put something on a lot that really is having a hard time doing it without the waivers. So while you're saying you meet all the requirements, you only meet all the requirements if you get your waivers. Right? Um. That you 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 talk about the green space, there's not a lot of green space there for all the units that you have. I know you're trying to balance between keeping it low, you know, so you have to spread the building out a little bit. And but then you're losing the parking spaces. Um, you lose an access, there's not a whole lot of green space for. For people to come in, I mean, you've got three bedroom units, right?
A couple three bedrooms. Yeah.
I mean, so you know, there's a lot, but it could be children there. So, I mean. It's it's tough to to. Look on this as it's. That it fits Main Street. Uh, I have had. People who are familiar with this. Uh, say. But they weren't happy with it being there, I said, look, I'd just like to, if you meet the requirements. And and if you get all your waivers, then the town has to accept it. But there have been comments made to me that they they think it's just a fit within a town somewhere. Uh, made by uh, by Danielle along with what she said about it looking more New England. You know, it 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 looks like it's a hotel. Uh, I I I see just. Looking back at Boston. Well, right, and I mean, and you're calling it a mixed use. Let's be real. I mean, you have one office, a garage. And the rest is is all units, so. I mean, it's not like a mixed use that has come in before from other people where the whole bottom floor. Was retailer office space, then up top was rental spaces, you know? This is this minimally, minimally. Mixed juice in this thing.
So I think, you know, to kind of go back of what what the objective was for this project was, I could be sitting here today. Like many other people that might be sitting here after me, looking to build. Townhouses, duplexes, houses, and selling them. You know, that wasn't the objective, that's not the objective, you know? We're trying to provide, we're not getting any subsidies from the states, federal government, or the town at this point. We're trying to make long-term reasonable rentals, and while. My best business decision would be sitting here and I could propose something different that would not be long-term rents. And we've talked about that on other meetings is that. I need to have certain unit counts, we have some waivers, we'll discuss them in more depth in a little bit, where I think some of them are applicable. Um, but that's my opinion. Uh, but you know, my sincere hope for this project was to be able to provide. Long-term housing. In this community. And I I'm trying to provide a product. And a design that meets the requirements of zoning, and that's what's kind of geared a lot of this, because as you mentioned. I could go four stories and make the building smaller. And it needs zoning. So that's routes we can go, it's a couple clicks of the mouse. But that's not what we thought was the most. Applicable from the meetings that we've had about trying to reduce height and trying to. Make it fit, so we're we really are trying to internalize that to. Be able to provide what will be a a great place for long people that live and work in this community.
Well, that's, you know. That's that's for today's. Meaning, but I mean. You bought this piece of property, and I'm sure you did your due diligence, checked it out, so what can I put there, what can I do? So you know what the requirements are, and there's nothing that says what you're proposing today is what it's gonna end up being. Um, it could end up being a a uh, short-term rental place, you know, in five years. So, I mean. It it. It's not the way to judge us based on what it could be or should be, it, but we do have to judge it as to whether it fits in. And I don't know that we can, although, you know. If you need something really bad, which we do, we need housing like this. It would be nice if it would fit in a little better and if there was more room in it, you know, more green space for. I mean, it it just doesn't seem like there's enough mixed use in it, I mean, it.
You know, so we have to call it mixed use because I do have an office there. So it's a residential building, we our first grabs that we did actually had the whole first floor as Merckel. Detail spaces, totally did it. But I looked back and said, you know, I need a, I need an office for ourselves, so people can. Have a plate, a place for printers and place to go, and so I'm not at my house all the time trying to use my printer at my house. So we need, I need an office, so I have to call it mixed use because it's not a residential building, because there is an office. Uh, but when we had looked at what really tried to think back of what the town needs, does the town need more storefronts? I thought the answer was no. I had a, I had a commercial. Uh, company that wanted to take about a third of the building, I had a tenant all lined up. Friend of mine that owns a business would have loved to move their business here. So I would have had it almost all filled. But I said. What do I think is more needed and what's the highest best use of? The square footage that we have on that ground level, and I'm not saying money-wise, I meant. As far as need, and I thought housing was, so I have to call it mixed use because there is an office there. But sure, call it a residential building, I'm proud of that, I think that's great. And but I also need a management office to be able to to manage that. Um, and. It may seem like a lot, but we have, we have the parking to support it. We we have the surface coverage area that's allowable, or below the surface coverage area that's allowable per zoning. So I feel like it it can be talked about that. It seems like a lot. But we're hitting those milestones, surface coverage area. It's.
You're not meeting the burden requirements without the waivers, and you know, how many waivers are you asking for here, totally?
So. There was four, in the parking spaces, when we called everybody in August, we could have made. The spaces to be bigger, so the traditional space of most municipalities, a lot of municipalities, nine by eighteen.
Which, we're just talking about length.
Yeah, 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 so that's what we provide, so if we want to change the plan set, we can come back next month and add two more feet. Uh, but when we talked in August, it seemed like a waiver was.
Of of an appropriate solution.
We said we'd consider it.
Yes, but that's.
Um, are you putting this, the residential, this is gonna be considered a restricted multifamily?
And what do you refer to that?
Well, restricted multifamily, it goes by lot coverage. It's considered a business use, if you consider it just a. Multi-family is a residential use, then you need fifteen thousand square feet per unit. So you're gonna classify this as a restricted multifamily under our ordinance.
I don't think we put on the application.
Also. At least one thing, the building cannot be sold entirely for condos.
Never the plan.
We had a developer that do that. The plan would let me get away with it about twenty-one years ago. We're dead voting again.
So I mean, basically restricted multifamily, never be condo. You know, you can't convert it to short-term rentals, it's. Rental apartments, basically. Upwards forever, but.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, we started this project because that's that's the need and. There could be, you know, we could have bought land that's a lot cheaper and a lot more land out at on Route Three and, but guess what? Oh, I'm just saying. North Woodstock or um, somewhere further away, but the land here's more, was a lot more expensive per square foot. But the convenience of it for the people that are gonna be working and living. In those apartments, that's, that's why we chose that location. And I'm fine with those restrictions, because our goal is these are longer rentals.
Yeah, it's just a hundred and eighty days, so greater than a hundred and eighty. That's like a restricted multifamily residential housing.
Sure, Green, this is, that's what it is.
A hundred percent.
Okay. And you taking down the two houses, how many rooms are in the Lincoln Motel that are being demolished?
Oh, you wanna keep any? I'll bring it to your house, uh, eight, there's eight rooms, uh, everything's gone.
Yeah, I understand, if you're taking down ten units, you're putting up nineteen.
Um.
More than I could imagine.
No, because I forget the unit counts, because the the two houses, there's.
There's three apartments in one, okay?
Yeah.
And then there's um, an apartment and a business.
And two businesses in the other one, so three units, three units.
Because it was one point to be applied to your new place.
Right.
The what?
That's a little bit of a savings.
Oh, so what I'm seeing, they're not.
Yeah.
Just creaming nineteen units on a lot, they're taking some units down as well.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any other questions, okay?
I I guess I don't have a question, I just have. Just one more opinion or statement.
Go ahead.
All right, um. This board approved or recommended, I I should say, that restricted multifamily. Change in our ordinance, and I believe this is the first. Project to come before us using. What we put out as an incentive to. Do this exact thing, don't build a hotel, build long-term housing. Um, and and. That also fits in with the town's master plan goals of of. Uh, increasing the availability uh, or incentives to build this 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 type of long-term. Uh, apartment type um, units. We as a board have set the. Lot coverage requirements, uh, height requirements. Setback requirements for this village district. And when he comes in and 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 abides by those. Uh, and then we say, well, we don't like the height, we don't like the setbacks, you know, we don't like the lot coverage. I I just don't get it, I just don't get it, if if we really don't like it, we need to take more time and look at our ordinances. And 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 densities and all of that stuff, but if we're gonna put out there that that we want this kind of density and this kind of setback in the zone. Then when people come before us, I just think it's inappropriate to say we don't like. All right, there needs to be more of a of a of a. Uh, uh. Criteria that we use that fits what our ordinances are. All right, um. You know, we we can talk about the waivers in a few minutes here, but but I just, I guess I'm. Confused by that we don't like it thing, I, maybe I don't like it, you know, I want it blue, not beige or whatever. That doesn't matter, okay? It's not in our ordinance that we need blue, more blue posters on Main Street. Um, so I just don't get the we don't like it um, thing. We've told what like, we want more multifamily, we want it to fit in with our master plan. And and we've told them what the acceptable lot coverages and heights are, and I think as Drew said, he could have gone up another whole floor. I think the the uh, responses we got from the abutters at the last meeting. Would they were very happy that he was limiting this to three floors, because. The the place up behind would have lost some of their view shed with the fourth story. Now, do we wanna make it more New England look and block their view? I would say that'd be a a a detriment to the town. So anyway, that's my thing.
Well, I don't think making it more New England do would block their view, I mean.
You want to build a.
You know, I mean, even just these little shorts, flat roofs. You know, in these lighter colored areas, I mean, if you were to put like a, you know, like a pretty. Flat pitch in those areas instead, I mean, it would still give you that.
You you're talking about these these three.
Yeah.
If if they were, if they were angled down.
Yeah.
Instead?
Yeah, I mean, that would give the building a little bit more of a a New England appeal even.
I'd probably agreeable shedding though, so I mean, that's an approved, an approved.
Even.
Proper style. And that's, that's fine, a little shed instead of, but I'm I'm agreeable and very happy to to do something like that, I'd rather not peek it because of. The windows above, we need windows for egress and things like that, so once you get those peaks, but instead of it being more flat, you shed it off.
One member talked about that, does anyone else have any thoughts?
If they feel inappropriate, they can agree.
Thinking these more New England.
I think that'll be. I also have other thoughts still.
I should go to Danielle.
Okay. You know, I mean, it's it's a simple modification and it, it would make it look.
And there were some of the windows, you could probably put a dormer over, make it peak. Nothing, nothing starts to take you, but just enough to break up the flat wall. This is my opinion, I must show the other board, even board, we're not.
Give it a little bit more character.
Just the aesthetic of it.
Then.
Paul, go ahead.
I. I agree with LJ that we did change our ordinances to try to make more of this.
Yep.
Usable for renters and stuff like that, but. We did it with. And thinking that they were gonna come in and meet the requirements. You know, I mean, our ordinances al- al- also allow for variances and waivers, but. You know, when you make the requirement, you think they're gonna meet them. Uh, and you expect that the applicants are gonna comply with with what the ordinances are. If there's gonna be waivers and variances, that there should be a hardship more than. You know. We. We need to make our building bigger as we can use more space.
Right.
Um, I don't think that.
We're we're gonna discuss.
No, no, I'm saying, but you know, in regards to, you know, the the abutters, all of ours kind of like it. Uh, know that this town's growing. And that their their lives can change in a moment if someone comes and buys a block of four houses. Wants to do something that meets the requirements, you know?
That's why I read the movement out of town.
Yep, and you know, if if we lose, if if they lose a little bit of their site. From there, I've lost a lot of things, I I used to like it when it looked all up, all all trees over there, now it's not, so. You know, you you give and you take.
Yeah, you can't stop progress.
A lot of people don't like it, part of the world's a change, I get that.
Right, I mean, so I mean. To me. I'd rather see it go up a little bit, let them see a little, have a little more room around it, have a little more park spaces. You know, that that doesn't bother, we have a ladder truck, we have higher buildings over here than what that would be.
Do you anyone else have any thoughts, Steve?
I just think for the size of the site, you know, I, you need it, it's gotta be happening somewhere around it. But I just think your eyes are just a little bit bigger than your belly. You know, it's too much, you know, on too little, that's the way I.
We need to work on that a lot too. True investment. To make it happen.
Yeah.
You know, the more units I have, and we mentioned this, I think, last meeting too, and in technical review committee is that. The goal is to make these reasonable rentals, and I have to look at the bottom line, I'm a for-profit business, but. That's not my core business, again, if I want to maximize every dollar, I'd be here sitting trying to sell condos. One million percent. But what I need to do is, I need to know, I don't know what this building's gonna truly cost me right now until we really. Get all the structural and start specing things out, but I know I can keep my build cost low, I'm a builder, I'm not just a developer, there's some built, there's some developers that will. Work in town and work in other towns, but then they have to hire someone, so I I building at cost. So what I need to do, look at is what my bottom line is, and what do I need to do to keep the lights on? That's not my core business, and it doesn't ever need to be my core business, I think it's a great. Thing to do. There's a great need, I think it's gonna be a fun, when I say a fun project, because it's outside the scope of building beautiful homes on South Peak. Up here in Lincoln. Um. But if I don't get the counts I have. Guess what, I can still make that building happen, but the rents, it's just economics, I'm gonna have to charge more for rents. Period.
What did you say you were gonna, yeah, what would you say your Spain is or your? Fluctuation on rents from a low to higher, are they all gonna be the same, are they gonna be different because of two, three or four? Or two, three bedrooms, I mean, what's your low, what's your high, what do you consider that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the market enough, and again, some of it, we we will look at market, we talked about the market rate last time. Um. You know, I feel like around here, I've heard crazy stories of two-bedroom going for twenty-five hundred. And in old, you know, not even nice, not even clean.
We can talk topic a little bit, talk about menus.
Oh, I'm just trying to figure. If he's, if he's saying that he's gonna try and keep it low so people can. Afford workers and stuff, I just wanna know what what is. Being, you know, I mean, I don't wanna know exactly, I don't care what the exact is, what's the low that you're gonna charge and what's the high, you put all this. All this research into this, you must know what you need to get out of the low and the high. You put all this, all this research into this, you must know what you need to get out of the low and the high, and what is that?
Well, we really don't have the numbers because I don't have a building approved yet, you know, so am I getting nineteen units? Or am I gonna be back here in a month or two with, with fourteen units?
Or you're coming in with sixteen? I mean, you should come in with.
Nineteen.
Well, based on nineteen units, what's it gonna be, if you haven't done those numbers now, and you've got all this work, I got, I got a one?
Yeah, no? I mean, I don't have.
You're, you're a for-business, you know, you're for, for profit, so if you don't know what those numbers are now, I'd be surprised.
Yeah, I don't, I, I honestly don't have those numbers, because I have to look at the build costs, because that's my intention of this, as I build this, we're gonna be able to know what we, so what we're gonna be able to do is I think we're gonna be able to provide a great product at a very reasonable price based on other options within this community.
Steve, do you have another question?
I'm gonna show you a hand now. Don't go away thinking we don't like it, we, we need it, but it's just, I think it needs a little tweaking. We can figure something out.
Any of the board members have any questions or open up public comment?
Motion to open up public comment.
Second.
Second.
Paul, David?
I.
Would anyone from the public like to speak in this application? Okay. He just said he didn't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really have a number, unfortunately, but my intention is it's gonna be rent at the lowest, long-term rentals, I mean, that's my, that's, that's been the.
You're not gonna afford like some dollars, you know, if you're looking to make money, you're not gonna make it off people's lives, get that huge. So, report, you're not gonna make it off that, you know that.
Um Jane, Jane, you need to speak to the board, you're, you're.
You can't hear me, LJ, can you hear me now?
You need to address us, not, not tell what he should or shouldn't do.
Well, I asked him how much he would pay.
Right, you should be asking or talking to.
How much is, are, how much is he getting for his rental there?
He does not a land use issue for the planning board to deal with, so I don't know.
Assuming it's affordable for the locals, when it would not be affordable, it was fourteen to two thousand dollars, that would not be affordable for locals, I would. So that was my concern. The other concern I have is that you made some really good points, aesthetic matters, I think it does. Other people may not, I think it does, I think it's sad to see our town develop. And I don't want that though, because I'm not sure that it's gonna be affordable for the locals anyway. But if they do build, they should also put a fence, that's my opinion, because when they come in the parking lot in the back side, there's a head like that gonna be going into the house all the time, come and go, come and go. So you, that was good, the, the uh, of what you said, I could do, because it matters. If it went any other town, they see you, but apparently, people don't care about aesthetic complacency.
You haven't made a decision yet, Jane, on the building.
Um, I don't, I'm just telling you how I feel and how a lot of people do, we want their homes, I got. Sad, but that isn't the issue, the issue is to have to manage this stuff so it can look good, other towns do, making, but it doesn't. It just does anything, people come in and do what they want. But I think.
There's not a lot of public comments.
Would anyone else like to speak?
This one.
Joe?
How much of the turning radius came out of the parking lot, back of the building? As it's quite.
We're on public.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we get the public comment?
Okay, I'll make one as we close public.
Wait, wait, I don't know what to say.
Oh, sorry.
No. Frank, go ahead.
Yeah, so I don't, I agree, the planning board really can't consider what their business uses for it, it's, I think the zoning is intended to is intended to encourage the kind of development that. But, and the way that works is again, by square footage and all of these setbacks, that it makes sense, and I, I think it's great to hear that that's the driving force, but you know, I'm a capitalist that I've ever wanted one, your driving force is to make money. We have no, you, you shouldn't be deciding whether he makes enough money or not, and quite honestly, you know, you should have decided whether you could, what you could build before you made the purchase, if you're now saying, well, this just doesn't work. That's, and I think that's a concern for him, not for the planning board. I mean, the planning board needs to look at and say, does this, does it fit, and by the way, the planning board needs to continue to look at the zoning and say, we really don't want four-story buildings like people in spite of that, we should come up with zoning that stops that along, you know, storefronts. Um, and I understand the mixed-use kind of component to that, that that may need to be considered, and, and you know, is that really what's going on? It's not particularly, it's residential, I mean, it's not. But the, the business purpose for the planning board shouldn't matter, it should just matter.
You're right.
Work for the town is just part of its plan, or are you granting um exemption, waivers um to accommodate it, and it really doesn't fit, if you don't like it, quite honestly, that is a consideration, if we don't like the way they develop. Um I know it's a topic for another night, we should add to the agenda for planning board, and that's to look at the zoning, because you're gonna kill Lincoln eventually if we don't keep it Lincoln. Um and, you know, I, I understand you're here hopefully for the long haul, but we know that, I think, you know, I was here for the long haul too, I could sell next week. That's a, isn't something the planning board should worry about, the planning board should be worrying about. What's best for the town and the way the zoning works, and what's the best use of land, and if you're asking, if the waivers are being asked for to accommodate a plan that we don't like, I think that's okay. I think the planning board should be able to say, you know what, I don't need to grant these waivers. It might be just their taste, maybe, they don't like the plan, and I give you a day, we're just like, oh, we don't like what it's gonna be for. But they're asking for waivers to accommodate a plan that the town actually, if we could change the zoning tonight, might change the zoning. So they wouldn't have, well, we have to live with the existing zoning, but that doesn't mean you have to grant waivers to allow something you don't like today. Because the other concern I have is that developers gets this and it's not completed. Things aren't going the way that you're, it's gonna go to people, exactly the way it was planned to be constructed, and now you've got something again that we didn't like that's in the, in the town that did not fit in, really. And so we shouldn't consider that he's trying to provide low-income housing for people, I think it's great, absolutely, and again, I have a son that works up here, and it didn't even more of it, you know, you can't live and work in the town Lincoln. Um, so I understand that, but to make it, I think if the developer's making that work by asking for permission waivers to build more units than the, than the planning board intended to sit on or on any piece of, I'm not speaking about that, I mean, that's why there's no, it's to limit development that doesn't fit what we want, and that's my concern.
But man, what you, what you, why do you consider this low-income housing?
Well, I, I'm, they're saying that, well, it's to provide how affordable units for people to be able to rent long-term. And I think that's great, I don't think that. I think that's what you're trying to encourage the result of, but as you said, you can't guarantee five years from now, that could be also locked on, isn't that right? Nothing in the planning, well, no, they can't.
We just talk, it's.
Okay, how does that work? And you don't need to do that to kind of class tonight.
No, but the, 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 the change in the ordinance that we made a couple of years ago, when the town voted it in, was that on a piece of land like that, that, that rather than the fifteen thousand square feet per unit, they could come in and say it's a commercial building and abide by the commercial building requirements rather than the fifteen thousand square feet. But in order to do that, it has to be a long-term, which is a hundred and eighty days or more rental. Okay, so, so that is the permitted use of that built, or will be the permitted use of that building. So if he comes in and wants to change it to short-term rentals or, or commercial space, or put in a restaurant instead of any change of use is gonna require it to come back to here. And, and again, the board at that time, I guess can decide whatever they want, but the real down-to-earth bottom line is, it was approved under these special circumstances, and now you're asking it to be removed, the answer should be no.
No, so here's the issue that I see with that, if he can't make the money work, so this is where the trouble in your saying, he can't make it work. Then the business fails because they can't convert it into something else?
Well, he can convert it into another commercial use, but he can't convert it into residential condos, because that would trigger the fifteen thousand square feet per unit.
I, I know, my favorite is that.
It could be changed.
But he can't, can't have it live, and I know you can't consider that, I'm just saying, but that's the end result of allowing it to happen if you don't like it at the beginning.
And then what happens to the property?
Paul, who wants to Paul?
I said, no one happens to the property.
Anyone else from the public waiting to speak? Anyone zooming in?
Motion to vote for them.
Second, second, Paul, David?
That's fine.
Paul?
Is Ray still on? I'd like to know what Ray think is on this, um, is he okay with everything after his review?
Hi, Paul.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm here, excuse me, I just had to clear my throat, I, yes, we, well, we, we received, we, obviously, we went through the comments, um, you know, item by item. Um but we, we just received these plans, I think they, I think they came into the office last night, so basically today, they hit our desk today. So we haven't had a chance to backcheck our comments against the, the documentation that's been submitted, so I can't sit here and say they've, you know, they've they've accomplished everything they need to accomplish, we would have to check their documentation first before I could say that. So if you're, I mean, you can.
That could be a condition if we were gonna do that anyway.
Exactly.
Um but and I disagree greatly with the fact that you don't think that knowing what they're gonna charge for rents there is, is relevant in this. I mean, if, if you're representing it as a, as a affordable housing, the cost is relevant to make sure that people can, and Lincoln can do that. Low-income, average wage in Lincoln, they're just slightly above poverty, so if you're really trying to accomplish a goal of being able to make this affordable, then you need to know what affordable is, because if you go into a blandet and say we, we don't care what they charge, and then they end up charging more, it's not gonna be affordable, so you're not accomplishing anything, I mean, you know?
You know, I mean, they're, they're police, firemen, teachers, managers, they all.
I hear you.
I, I guess, where in the land use plan is being affordable, and first, I believe it's probably market rate, not affordable?
Exactly, so when I was here in December, August, any meetings, one, I try, I try not to use the word affordable. Um because we're not getting subsidies from the local government, federal government, or the state. If that changes, I have staff talking to the state, and I don't know whether anything will come of it or not, and that could change. Um, but at this point, I'm not getting any subsidies, so I can't use the term affordable housing, I've always been trying to use the word reasonable house. And I think that's a better way, because once you have subsidies from the federal government, or the state, or the local government, then there's usually restrictions or guardrails of what is affordable, how many units and things like that, but, but you're getting something in return to make them affordable, at this point, I'm not, so that's why I try to use the word reasonable. But in this community or in this, you know, in this community or in the economics, as you increase inventory of housing, it's gonna help all those other units, because even if you, I think you mentioned a dishwasher or staffer, whatever it might be, if they, if that's too much for them, the people that were in those other units down the street are now maybe in this unit, which increased inventory is increased inventory, which does help, but I can't use the word affordable, I want, I need to use the word reasonable.
I understand, but I mean, the, the inventory of housing in Lincoln that is changing is not affordable. And, you know, that's why we need to know what affordable is, or call it whatever you want, affordable, uh whatever your word was that you wanted to use, but I mean, it is, there, there is a need for housing that low-income earners can, can live in. Um and, you know, you gotta call, call it what it is and say, say, look, I don't, how much are you gonna charge, if you said we were gonna charge two thousand dollars a month? You know, it, to me, I would look at that and say, well, that's, you know, the average dishwasher's ducking off for two thousand dollars a month, you know, and, and that's, and, and that's, you have to know that question, can't just go into this and claim it. I mean, and then, I applaud what you're trying to do here, I know Dennis is trying to help you out over here, you know, to, to put people in there, but the, the bottom line of the whole thing is that, if, if, if what you're gonna garner for being a business person, um it, it's not able to be paid by the dishwasher, the waitress, ob- obviously, there's teachers and things like that, I understand that too, but now the rest of the housing is going so fast, and for so much money, that there's, there's very little left to be able to make something that the the little guy that's making, washing dishes or bussing or, you know, that wants to bring them in, that, that they can afford. And, you know, that's what I kind of thought we would, we were doing here, and uh, I'm, I'm not so sure anymore, and I, and I agree with Steve, I think that. If you wanted waivers, do things like that, and you were really, you know, that, that, that the, the cost was going to be in, in line with what that the wage started linking, then, then I could, you know, I might look at some waivers, but, you know, I can't tell you. I mean, waivers need a hardship, and I don't see a hardship except for you making some more money here. That's the hardship I see, you need a certain amount of money, a certain amount of area to make money, because you're, you're investing in it. You need, you know, you need a certain space to do that, but, and you need waivers to do that. Well, if those waivers can't do it.
If we could go through the waivers, because I don't necessarily believe I need many waivers.
We're gonna discuss, I'm just gonna dismiss them, just. Do you have to give another comment?
This, Ray has gone over the plan totally, yeah, really?
No, but I mean, if they get approval, that would be a condition, final review by the county engineer.
I think you just need to check, and it's pretty narrow going to that parking lot, very, that's the tightest spot in all of the country coming in.
Okay, I believe he, he checked, and maybe Ray, you can correct me if I'm wrong, he checked the whole thing, he, he came up with his comments, they've responded to his comments.
Asking the, he didn't check, so, yeah.
Right, right, and, and he just needs to check the changes that they made or the responses that they gave, they said they added this comment to the, to the report. They, he just has to check that list of things, forty-something items, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, we just have to backcheck the documentation, make sure they addressed all the comments.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, um and I guess, you're very uh dependent of getting, I think it's, I've noticed, um I know um that if, I'm not sure that this is a good thing, and I know a lot of people in the area, you know, like, you know, the locals. So I just wanted to realize.
Thank you, Kate.
Yeah.
Why don't we, is the application complete? Why don't we do the waivers first, still go to the. Everyone have the, people for waivers?
What's she use, Jimmy, could you?
Says application for waiver of subdivision slash S P I. You need to, if you don't have a call, grab, grab marks.
Hi. Okay. I'm going, oh, fuck on the bottom there, so there we go.
Right on top, see?
Yeah. I'm gonna need to build a new package, so the old one.
Yeah.
There we go. Thank you.
Everyone have that?
Yeah.
So I'll read it and then you can make your comments. In response to T I C comment number fifty. In response to T I C comment number fifteen regarding front setback requirements, the project site has frontage along three streets. In the event that the planning board considers both church and Coolidge Street as not as frontage but as sides, then waivers requested to allow the proposed building. Be five feet from the side yard where ten feet would be required. Any comment on that?
So. Um, reading through the ordinance regulations. We're under the impression that you would have frontage on all three streets. Uh, there are no specific. Indication in the ordinance saying if there was three streets or multiple streets, you'd have one on a main street or the, or the front of a building. Uh, we've seen in other towns or cities where the actual ordinance says a bunch of street. Um, and that's where the, that requirement will come in. So we were under the impression that. The frontage beyond the right of ways, which is church, main, and Coolidge. And that's why we brought the plan set forth with. Under that impression, now the building's on the line.
Okay.
As now, those are three lots. And you have, do have frontage on church. You do have frontage on Coolidge from those two outside lots. So then now you'd be taking that frontage away and saying it's just on Main Street.
Okay, and it's similar to a lot of lots when we do dimensional sizing, whether the frontage has to be a hundred, two hundred feet. You know, there are times in most towns and cities, it will be continuous frontage. And that could be, if it's on a corner lot, their frontage would be on more than one lot. And they meet the requirements because if they have their two hundred, one hundred foot frontage, but they're on a corner lot, but they're get the frontage on. All streets that they're on, and that's the frontage.
Okay, Carol?
Okay, I think you, um, have, uh, raised. Uh, discussion, Ray and I had a discussion with the town.
Yeah, I have that.
About it, and. Um, even though you disagree, um, about. The frontage being on all three sides. Um, we go with the frontage is on Main Street, and the other two on the sides. However, it is in the Village Center District, and. You have specific authorization to weigh dimensional requirements. And the setbacks are exactly dimensional requirements, there is the chart. With the dimensional requirements, the setback, front side, and here are all, um, available. By you. So I'm just putting that out there.
Any, what do we have any questions on this?
I, yeah, just, just commenting, I think this just goes along with the fact that what we're doing here is. Is trying to put. Five pounds, ten pounds of building in a five pound bag.
Well, you know. Doesn't meet the green space requirements as proposed?
Yes.
Good for him.
So if you were to build three separate buildings as opposed to one building. And face them each towards one of those different streets, he could do that with five foot setbacks, is that correct? Maybe frontage. One of that building, in front of that building, in front of that building, each facing a different street.
Interesting concept.
I, I mean, I look at, I look at side, side boundaries as being a, a. A common boundary between two different landlords. So that he has to stay ten feet on his side, I stay ten feet on my side, and we have a buffer between our properties. There's no properties on the side, there, there, there are other streets. And he could build three different, three different buildings. He could chop, I mean. Chop this up and just twist him around and put front doors on the other side, and then you. You'd get away with it, but this is obviously a better, better concept, I.
I mean, five feet is not a lot, you know? Think about what five feet is a building to a road. It's not a lot. You know, I mean.
Look at your land use ordinance.
I hear you.
It's if you want to change that.
Five feet is a lot, but they're asking for a waiver.
Well, five feet is a front setback there. They're saying that those two sides should be also front setbacks.
I, I, I understand that.
I mean, I, I think ten or three that there's side setbacks because the front door is on Main Street.
If I, you're not trying to frame, you're, you're trying to frame this on there by allowing it. By allowing this waiver to go forward. What to do?
Allowing it to go forward. I'm only one vote.
Well, I'm just saying.
Well, the board will be setting precedent then tonight if they were to vote on that, um, saying those streets would be side setbacks.
There's no precedent, it, it's all. Precedent doesn't really exist in a town like it, they've made so many different.
But it's, you're gonna go off your zoning ordinance, what it says.
We're up in an interpretation.
I.
Exactly.
I think the vote doesn't matter, but I think we should stick up the ten foot setbacks.
And just to clarify, the front door isn't necessarily on Main Street. That is. One door to the office, but the main door for the primary unit of the building is in the rear. But the whole case point is I'm voluntarily merging three parcels. I don't necessarily, we did a lot of concept work, of course. Looked at a lot of different things, uh, but we're voluntarily merging these lots where we put it as okay. There are other alternatives, but we thought this was. The best.
But is, is normal, we're gonna take two votes, one to even vote whether or not you feel a, um, waiver is warranted, and then we'll vote on the waiver itself.
Well, just vote on the waiver. What's the difference? Anyone who doesn't think it's warranted is gonna vote no, anyone who thinks it's warranted is gonna vote yes.
It's gonna come up later, because we're discussing whether there's a disagreement. They don't think a waiver is warranted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got a brother. I was thinking. People, people are gonna come out there and they'll, they'll be right. Like fire, that, 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 that ramp, that. Egresses. It turns out there's only one, one door going out of the building. That could create a problem by one.
Yeah, well, I mean, the fire chief's gonna redo the plans and everything.
Yeah, just wanna make sure. And so we have two, we have two staircases and two exits. For fireline safety, and this will be stamped by a fireline safety engineer as well.
Okay.
It has to be.
Right, so those who feel that. They need to request a waiver for the setback requirements, raise your hand and say aye.
Try that again.
You, does the board feel that a waiver is warranted?
Wanted or required?
Required, excuse me.
Do I feel that a, a waiver is required?
Right, in other words. Do they have three front setbacks, basically, because it fronts on three streets?
But, but you have to go by. What they're asking for, what the waiver's asking for.
They're only asking for the waiver because the staff told them they need it to, is that right?
That's correct.
They stated they don't believe they need it. So I want to take a vote, just so we clear, get it clarified.
If they don't believe they need one, why they apply a vote, as the staff said?
Right.
Because we thought they needed it.
I think one's required. My vote.
Say it again?
I think one is required.
Okay. All right, I'll pull the board. Steve?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say no.
I'd say no. Joe?
I'm kinda leaning toward it. Yes.
Okay, so waiver is required. Right. All in favor of granting the waiver. Pursuant to article six, section B dot four dash B, page thirty-three in the land use ordinance. Raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed to?
Opposed to granting the waiver.
I'm opposed to granting the waiver.
That'd be all three sides, it's the one side.
The two sides.
The sides are, they're requesting a waiver.
I'll read it. This is. I'll read it again, then we can vote. In response to T I C comment number fifteen regarding the front setback requirements, the project site has frontage along three streets. In the event that the planning board considers both church and Coolidge Streets not as frontage but as sides, then a waiver is requested to allow the proposed building to be five feet from the side yard. Whereas ten feet would be required. So we've. We've decided that. Church and Coolidge are sides. Just took that vote.
Right, and now you voted on.
Now, we're gonna vote whether we want to grant a waiver to allow them five feet setback on church and Coolidge.
Did we have the right to put, to grant a waiver in the zone, right?
Right, I'm just, I read the section.
Yeah, on the dimensional chart, paragraph five, we put note five, dimensional requirements for the Village Center may be waived. By the planning boards as long as they meet all other zoning requirements. And it said dimensional requirements, and we checked with the attorney, and we said you could waive. All of them on this dimensional chart.
The reason why I'm asking you. I just wanted to be on the record. That we had, we can legally waive it, not have to go to G V A. Some people call me that, but. I realized that said, when we're waving, we can do. I wanna be sure of the record, I don't know.
Yeah.
Common, but, no, minutes.
Yeah. So we can.
I think that they understand what was going on.
Should we do a motion in a second to?
Why don't we do that?
I'll make the motion that we, uh, grant a waiver. Um, allowing a five foot setback from Church Street and Coolidge Street.
Second?
Second, you're gonna vote the vote on.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye. I'll oppose, say no.
Oppose.
No? Are you, yes.
Louis waiver.
Okay, so the waiver is granted for that one. Now, you're not contesting that waiver is needed on the parking spaces, is that correct?
Uh, the size requirement, so no, we have plenty of parking. We meet the minimum. It's the size requirement we're asking the waiver for. A hundred and seventy square feet is required, which is like nine. By eighteen point six, seven feet or seven, seventy, whatever it may be. We are asking it to be nine by eighteen, which is a hundred and sixty-two square feet.
So I'm gonna read it. In response to T I C comment number fourteen regarding parking spaces, the site design. That's created parking spaces to be nine by eighteen, a hundred and sixty-two square feet, where one hundred and seventy square feet is required. In an effort to maximize the number of spaces to accommodate proposed use, will maximize green space within the site. Anyone have any comments on that?
Same thing they were, were putting. Ten pounds of shit, if I found that.
Uh, if I could just comment, from our August meeting, we can make the, the one hundred and seventy. Square foot parking spaces where we wouldn't eat, we'd still be under the circumcised area. So we, as we discussed in August, if the board, as we did unofficial poll, whether it was, whether we should, we can still change it, but whether it was an exercise that we necessarily needed. To or not to, and from that discussion, it seemed that a waiver was our direction that we'd go, but if, if that is the position of the board. It is something that could be changed and still would ultimately work on the site with the dimensional requirements as stated in the ordinance.
You increase the size of the parking space, you wouldn't go over the lot.
That's correct.
Anyone have anything else? So. Is there a motion to grant the waiver?
I'll make the motion so we can vote on it.
Your second?
Our second to put the voting.
All right, all in favor of granting that waiver, raise your right hand and say aye.
Are you looking who, Joe, are you looking who's voting? So you can vote with them, or you're gonna vote your conscience, Joe?
I did know.
Okay, look around. Do what you gotta do, Joe.
Okay.
Why are you covering the paper? I'm not, right?
That's, um.
I bet. I'm just looking around to see who you were looking at, see if it was okay if you voted.
So all in favor of granting that waiver, raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Right.
Waiver is three to two? But this next one here, regarding the setbacks for pads, light poles, et cetera. And a pro contention that this waiver isn't required, is that correct?
Yeah, because the definition instructor doesn't actually open any of those. Uh, in the ordinance, that's what we'd ask the board to look at that definition and to verify their agreements with what staff and Ray requested.
And specifically, they prefer not to have a fence. I'd be able to remove the fence from the sideline.
Well, I think we heard comments.
We heard comments in favor of your events, or.
Yeah.
Carl, what?
First, first, I, I don't feel that, you know, a waiver is needed, these are ancillary uses to the building.
Yeah, we were, when we read it, we were hoping that we could say. When we changed, that we should change those. Definition in March, but of course it's not on our agenda, um, so that we could exclude certain things like.
Well, I don't, you know, I don't recall a several, like. Excluding, make them put a transformer of some fifteen foot from the property line or small things like that.
No.
So I think, I think if we, if we start doing that, we're setting a bad precedent here, here tonight.
I agree with those, those should be excluded, but we weren't clear from reading this. It was excluded, so that's why we're letting you know.
Excuse me, Jim?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I could just, I mean, your definition of structure is anything constructed or erected with a fixed location on the ground. That could be anything. It could be an equipment pad. Could be based for a light pole. What's that?
I think that's a highly technical interpretation of the ordinance, really.
Well, that, that's one of the, I think Carol, I, I could be wrong, but I think Carol had mentioned maybe taking a look at that definition to make it a little bit more clear, but. That, that's, that's where. Our interpretation. Of structure is basically what it says. Anything that's constructed or erected, erected with a fixed location on the ground, so. If you wanna, we just wanted to make sure that. You at least brought it to the table to have a discussion around whether or not you felt any one of these elements. Could be considered a structure or not. Your definition isn't entirely clear.
Anyone else from the board? Any comments? Chris? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that a waiver is not required. Uh, regarding pads, light poles, fences within the setbacks as, as board does not consider them structures.
Their second?
I'm sorry, no.
All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Five to zero on that.
As an aside, can we put that on the list of items that we're gonna discuss for upcoming voting changes? Just clarification on the definition.
What the race, the race that he wants to clarify that.
Right, yeah.
Well, I didn't need a force anyone to clarify that.
Well, that's what we just talked. I said we wanted to bring it up to discuss.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I, I would recommend that you take a look at your definition of structure. Just so that we don't run into this situation again.
Being part of nothing, I don't think there's really an issue with what we think it is.
We might not be the board in three years, five years, ten years from now.
I bet we're in bed, right? We're doing, we gotta work with what's here now, right?
No, we have the responsibility to oversee that ordinance and make changes that are beneficial to the town Lincoln.
You have the responsibility, you have the responsibility if there are challenges in any of these organs, just to do it.
Okay, then we can discuss, not to discuss, but at least, at least.
We're all, we're all.
Yeah, let's kind of stick to this and correct, I'm sorry. All right. In response to T I C comment number forty-two. Regarding stormwater runoff, the site currently has no stormwater management in place. And this project site design includes the use of forest pavement, round drains tied into drainage lines located in church. Our analysts confirms that this existing drainage system in church street is able to accommodate the addition of. A treated stormwater coming from this site. So you're looking for a walk waiver, the stormwater management ordinance?
Yeah, this waiver seeks relief from the post development peak runoff volume requirement in the stormwater management. There is a slight increase, um, of about point one five acre feet. We are using coarse pavement, um, which is an infiltration, however, we're underdraining it. We have not done any test pits out there, so there may or may not, or we can't count on whether or not there'll be filtration ability up there. So there is, um, an increase. Typically, what happens is to meet that minimum requirement of the volume, is you have to have some type of in, uh, infiltration in the post. To reduce your peak volume runoff off the site. So we do treat everything, um, and mitigate the best we can with the fourth pavement, however, we do not meet that requirement for the volume. Peak runoff volume.
And, and you don't know, because you haven't done any test pits, whether it will.
It will work, it's underdrained, so the section, the cross section that is installed will infiltrate into the, into the underdrain system. We didn't do any, um, test pits below that. Whether or not, you know, there'll be infiltration ability below that on your drain system.
So they assume no infiltration, so in reality, it may have been infiltration, which. But we would have had to do test pits to, but they show that as no infiltration.
Websoil survey, which we used for our soil data, shows a soil up there. A soil means high infiltration.
Yeah, true, yeah.
Yep. So we have not included any infiltration. Yep, so we have not included any infiltration in our drainage analysis.
Are you okay with this? You okay with this, right?
Yeah, I mean, the 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 volume increase is marginal, um. I think you're, I think you would be fine.
Any other questions?
Well, I just wonder with all the excavation, how that drainage would be affected, I mean, what's existing to what you're gonna implement into that site?
So there's no drainage on site?
Right.
Right now, so everything is sheet flows or not even sheet flow, everything just runs off the site, goes either in the main street, church, or Bull Street. Now we're concentrating into the force pavement section where it will be treated. And it'll go through the filter media that force pavement section is, and then underdrain into the proposed catch basins and the. Pro drainage manholes that will discharge into the existing town municipal own drainage system. That's located uh Church Street. And we did the analysis and Ray loved to verify that, but we despite that last night, that the existing town infrastructure um is in work, is working. And our proposed increase in the volume is not going to make it not work.
And the state is fine with it.
Right, so that. Is there a motion to grant the waiver? For the stormwater, regarding the stormwater runoff.
Don't we have something that said we disturbed fifty percent of the property, it's stormwater management plans implemented?
Yes, we do, we have the ability to grant.
I'm living that devil right now. I'm not gonna put that.
This is a management plan for them, um, so it is, it is in effect. Um, the only thing is the the amount of slightly more. So it's just a small piece of it that we're asking, they're asking for.
I I think the big difference between what you're you're living through and what this is, that they have a plan. And that that that's proposed to work and Ray's looked at and says it will work.
And you don't not need that, you don't have any.
Yeah, we got nothing but party.
Basically, they don't want to go anything further than what's on the site, what they're asking, it's supposed to make a separate.
No, that should be making things better, I think, versus what's there now.
Versus what's there now?
Right, yeah.
And and just so I get this straight, you're coming out from that infiltration area with a single discharge pipe that goes into the town's. Stormwater catch base, correct?
Yeah, right there at that corner.
Okay, which runs a few feet or handful of feet and connects to the states?
Yes.
And then from there on, it's it's the state system.
Yes.
And they've already approved it. So all you're looking for is from, I mean, I don't know, I'm just guessing thirty feet maybe on Church Street that it runs down before it hits the state system.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, the state's happy that we're not actually focusing the discharge point where it was now, it's the catch base out in front of the corner. They're actually happy that we're discharging into the town municipal own.
Right, so when it comes on to state property, it's coming underground in a pipe as opposed to sheeting off a road onto a state highway.
But still going into the infiltration system, and they've said prior that there was no, that they wouldn't let anyone else put any more water into it, so I I'm. Again, we're not doing that.
Yeah, I'm actually cut that.
We, if if I could just interject here, so we had, we had a lengthy discussion with the district one office about this issue, and I brought this to their attention, that essentially we're moving the. They're moving the stormwater runoff from a catch basin in Main Street over to the catch basin in Church Street. And the state, the state was fine with that, and I also indicated to them that um. You know, we just, we just needed to hear back from them, so there's no essentially blowback on the town that should there be a problem down in the future that the state is gonna be pointing to the town that it's your problem. Because basically, all the runoff is going in now to the town system instead of directly into the state system. So we got that confirmation from DOT. They're they're all set with this. The other thing I just want to point out as far as the discharge point for the drainage. Nate needs to check that catch basin to make sure the tie-in can work. That hasn't been done yet. So that's one of the things that are outstanding that we need to check out. And as far as the comments are concerned, since I have the floor, we. We'll we'll backcheck the comments, but I can't sit here and guarantee that once we backcheck the comments and based on the changes, we're not gonna have additional comments. So I just want to be clear on that. It's not just backchecking comments, it's backchecking comments and. You know, if if everything's all set, great, if not, then we may generate more comments.
But I mean, this is something, if should they get approval tonight, it's just gonna be handled administratively?
Yes, that's that's fine. I mean, if you want to make it conditioned upon, you know, approval of the technical review team or the town engineer. Um, you, you know, like, like you've done in the past, that's that's certainly fine.
But how can you determine what's top of you, meaning what's plain to board comment? I mean.
Yes, as I would understand it, they they said that they added something to the plan. Ray gets to look at that, and if it's not acceptable to Ray, that that the two engineers figure it out.
Right.
Sufficient?
We we can go through mine, I'm mine, I'm too, and sure exactly where each item is tonight. I know that's probably inappropriate. But we can do that if the board feels that's necessary. We can go through each one, I'm sure exactly where we made the revision.
I don't have an issue.
I made big plans that so we can all read them nice and clear.
Yeah, so thank you.
I guess. Is Joe okay with that? In the time come.
Joe, anything else? Alright, is there a motion to grant? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Grant what?
Stormwater runoff waiver that.
I'm gonna read it again.
Yeah, we, yeah.
In response to TRC comment number forty-two, A, we got a stormwater runoff, site currently has no stormwater management in place. This project site design includes the use of forest pavement with underdrains tied into drainage lines in. Located in Church Street. Our analysis confirms that this existing drainage system in Church Street is able to accommodate the addition of the treated stormwater coming from this site. So they're looking for a waiver from the stormwater management ordinance.
Right, and you're authorized in the ordinance itself directly. And if it's a waiver of the whole thing, it's a small piece of it.
It it's a, it's a waiver of the volume requirement as articulated in the ordinance.
Waiver of the volume requirement that's articulated in the ordinance. Well, basically, they're, your unit says you can't increase post development runoff, they go over, I think, a quarter of an acre foot, you said?
Oh, one one five, so let's not put an acre foot, yes.
So that's the reason you're asking for a waiver. Alright, is there a motion to grant that waiver?
I already did that.
Joe made the motion. Is there a second?
And I seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, five to zero on that. Done with the waivers, is the application complete?
Yes.
We need to go down to the application? Okay, Jimmy, if you'd be able to prove it, that's fine.
I'm not going through it, I don't feel more comfortable. And this is the original application that they filed, is no changes to the application?
Let him get back to you.
This was filed last week, twenty, yeah, so twenty, six, twenty-seven, twenty-three is when. When they filled out the application initial. Have you made any changes since then?
No, not the one, the only changes to be made will be discussed at the TRC meeting, raised comments, and okay, where the last meeting, they did not make any changes to the application, nothing now.
Alright, I'm gonna go through it. If anybody has any questions, comment just sitting around me.
Yeah, we don't have problems with that.
I wanna read it. I'm I'm just gonna read through it.
Read.
Alright. Scale not less than one inch equals forty inches provided. Submit three copies of blue or black line prints provided, submit a digital copy of the print provided. Date, title, North Arrow, and scale provided, name and address of the owner and applicant provided, name and address of the licensed land surveyor provided. An accurate plan of the site showing existing natural features including watercourses, water bodies, valleys, type of vegetation, topographical features. And any other features which would be considered in the site about the design process that provided. The type, extent, and location of existing proposed landscape and open space areas indicating what existing landscape, open space areas will be retained, provided. Existing imposed topography of the site at two of counter intervals provided. Soil mapping units and unit boundaries not applicable, floodplain identification areas not applicable. The location of all buildings within fifty feet of the site and the location of all intersecting roads or driveways and utilities, water, sewer, electric cable and telephone within two hundred feet. Provided, the location of all buildings setbacks required by the land use plan ordinance provided. The location of district boundaries including wetlands not applicable. The lot area, street frontage, and the requirements for minimum lot size provided. Location of off-street parking and loading spaces with a layout of the parking indicated provided. The location with curving and type of accessways and egress ways provided. The location of all existing imposed deed restrictions, covenants, et cetera, not applicable. Survey property lines showing the deflection angles, distances, radius, lengths of ox, control angles along property lines and monument locations and names of all butters provided. If the development is subdivision, then lines and streets, all proposed streets, lanes, and ways, abesments intended to be dedicated for public use, all subdivision regulations shall apply, that's not applicable. Plan views of all buildings, either location or posed with their sub-use size, location, and floor elevations indicated provided. A typical allocation view of all existing and proposed buildings indicating their height and signing siding provided. The type and location of solid waste disposal facilities provided. Location, size, and design of proposed signs and other advertising or instructional devices not applicable. Stormwater drainage plan showing A, the existing imposed methods of handling stormwater runoff provided. The direction of flow of runoff through the use of arrows provided. Location, elevation, and size of all catch basins, dry wells, drainage ditches, swales, retention basins, and storm sewers provided. Engineering calculations used to determine drainage requirements provided. The size and proposed location of water supply and storage facilities and provision for future expansion of storage and water facilities provided. The size and location of existing proposed public and private utility connections included provisions for fire protection provided. Location and type of all existing and proposed lighting for all outdoor facilities not applicable. She did provide something on the lighting, I believe.
We have a lighting plan, yeah. Thank you, Charles.
Copies of all applications submitted for applicable state approvals and permits not applicable. Performance guarantee of bond not applicable. Illustrative effect on pedestrian and automotive circulation provided. Illustration of fencing walls and buffers not applicable. If waivers for non-compliance for DOT construction specification for roads, parking, streets, drainage, and bridges will be required.
No question. So on the bond requirement, you said not applicable. So what? Assurances do we have that? He can meet his, he starts taking those places down and all of a sudden. Something happens, though financially or otherwise, that who's gonna? Who's who's responsible taking it down?
I mean.
Get halfway through a project, I I don't know what it's financial backing is, I know.
Well, I mean, I guess.
But, you know, uh, it's, you know.
There's always gonna be a predator will foreclose and they'll be responsible for property.
I'm just asking.
I mean, I'm just, I mean, it's my answer, I'm not saying.
Yeah, we make up developers to that all the time.
Yeah, would we want to require bonds for our project moving forward?
Right.
Have we required bond for any of the hotels?
No.
Okay, then probably we wouldn't do that for this one. We did for the walk-in clinic. I just thought we were gonna start that.
Yeah, but they were, that was for, we had them set aside seventy-five grand something.
That was like a letter.
That was, that was for the sediment bond, I think.
One, all, there was something, he's right, but some for the um.
I thought we would require that.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's not necessary.
Was it to the off-site improvement on the road, the transit lane?
Yeah.
Transit lane.
Well, I mean, we're right on Main Street, maybe a letter of credit, something just to make sure that goes back to them, something.
Okay, disagree, but. Joe?
Don't worry about it.
Okay, so, alright. Okay, I mean, I'll pull a board.
Well, that's fine.
Alright. Everyone put it with.
I'm just pulling board, yeah.
Okay. Joe?
Not worried about it.
I'm not worried about it.
I think i- if anything should happen, the the value of that land would outweigh any costs of completing demolition or cleaning up or whatever, leaving the property.
You'd have to get it first through the court, and that would cost you a lot of money.
And that would come out of the proceeds of the property also.
I mean, honestly, how hard is it to get a letter of credit?
I mean, if it's not necessary, why are we gonna make?
Bond is an expense.
Yeah.
You pay for that.
Well, law's expense, a letter of credit, it's all.
Says bonding.
Didn't, give us a letter.
That's the same thing we blocked, what goes in a door.
Excuse me, Jim?
Yeah.
I I just, I just looked in our files real quick here, the, there's a bond estimate sitting in the Hampton Inn file. So I, you, you must have had a bond, performance bond on the Hampton Inn, right?
What's that again?
I said, did you have a, did you have a bond on the Hampton Inn building?
No.
Well, we have a bond estimate, so I don't, you might want to double check that. I mean, if that's your rationale for not doing a bond on this building.
Okay. Same, same vote, Joe? Alright, mine's the same. Okay, no, Steve?
I thought we were gonna require a bonds from that point forward.
So that's a yes, Paul?
I I think we need something, uh, a longer letter of vote.
Okay, so we got three, three to two. Okay, anyone have anything else in the application? Is the motion accept the application is complete?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
I do, but I'm.
We're not voting on the, on the site.
We're not voting, just the application.
Yeah, to complete, right.
So the answer is yes. I mean, when you can vote no, I don't care how you vote. Alright. We ready to make a decision on approval for tonight? To have the tweaks to the building design.
I don't think we have, I think we have a way to get Ray's. Approval, Ray's comments before we approve, just in case the planning board needs to weigh in on it.
Joe, what do you think?
Ray is a beauty in every.
No, we just got the stuff, it's all stamped with today's date.
September thirteenth, it's stamped.
I mean, we can handle it administratively, that's your call.
Well, sorry, let the administration, review board look at it.
But the.
Yeah, I understand, they're gonna look at it regardless of how we vote tonight, but. You wanna wait two weeks, continue to hear it for two weeks and wait for them for their decision, or do you wanna? That's the question, do you wanna make a motion for approval tonight?
I want the motion approved.
If we should approve, make a consent motion for approval tonight?
Make a motion for approval tonight?
Yeah, Steve?
One second.
Well, I'm asking, do you think we ought to, ought to take a motion, a vote to approve this tonight?
Instead of ahead and right, make the comments. Yeah.
You don't want to vote tonight, Paul, you don't want to vote tonight?
Nope.
We got three yeses and two noes. Right, so what do we have to condition me? A final review by the technical review team. We have wanted the tweaks to the design, those flat roofs. Three flat roofs here in the front to make it look more New Englandly.
And there's one on the side, at least one. Any of them.
Okay. So they're. So what you proposing again to make?
A shed roof?
Shed roof, okay.
Yeah.
Four shed roofs.
Maybe one in the top where the sign is.
Yeah, I'll make it all cohesive, so even if there's some on the backside, the whole, all, all four sides will be cohesive.
Okay.
See, what is, what did you thought about her comment? On that one part of the roof that sticks up, copying properties, there's a slanted roof, facing forward. What if that were a New England style peaked section, it would be slightly higher, but not, not.
I mean, I could, I can definitely do some renderings, you know, have the architect do some renderings, and I mean, if that's would be a admin stuff that we can have, look Carol.
Danielle, can I ask you a thought on that?
Yeah, I mean, even just from front to back, even just that a little. Yeah, I mean, even just from front to back, even just that a little bit of a little more off, that other piece.
The piece in the front, like you were talking about.
Yeah.
You make like, like a little, uh.
The, the peak.
Like we. Yeah, I mean, sorry.
It'll be put a couple color windows in it, with white on it. Or we can cut the hoop line on that.
Here perhaps, here.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm willing to work on some stuff like that.
Yeah, and this here, I mean, where this is the shed right on the stairs.
Thank you.
Sorry. It's all the time it works, so.
Anyone have anything else?
Um. Engineer review or T R T review, I don't know how you wanna do it.
Town engineer review, we all work together anyways.
Okay, I mean, we all work together.
So T R T review.
My one question with that will be similar to, uh. From August, the fifteen Business Day, you guaranteed.
Ray, did you catch that, Ray?
I did not, what was the question?
Asked it would be a fifteen day review period for the information. When you deal with the T R C, you get to turn it around in fifteen business days.
Yeah, that's the schedule that we put in front of everybody, so, but we'll get it done before then. Drew, Drew, we can, we can, if you wanna talk offline, we can, we can talk about it, uh, the schedule.
Awesome, thank you, Ray.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion to approve this with the following conditions, the technical review team reviewed. Of the, of the, um, recent changes. Uh, coordination and approval, um. Uh, BPW for the stormwater connection. Um, any needed, uh, conditioned upon any needed state approval and permits. And the change of the. Flat roofs to shed roofs. You wanna just? Make the, the. P R T review or Danielle?
What I could do, you can't, um, you can't have a meeting about it, but. I could send it out and then. Block, somebody blocks, if someone hates it, they can get in touch with you.
Right.
All right, so, so, uh. Changing the flat roofs to shed roofs to be reviewed by Carol.
To clarify, those would be the, the side flat roofs, not the main roof. Would be just the, uh, access roofs.
Yes, excellent, that's good, yeah.
Anything else? All right, is there a second? Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, three to two. Right, the block.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Can I ask you one question?
Yeah.
Somebody asked me if we'd hear the building down, if you'd come look inside the building, after they were brought up.
Yeah, uh, cause I don't take anything out of the.
No, just saying.
You want to, someone wants to know.
Drew is brought up there.
That's my grandfather's thing.
He started bringing up those.
Anything you want, yes, let me judge it. Whatever I can do.
When you start demolition.
Wanna get rid of everyone?
Nine o'clock tonight.
Ray, we're all set, yeah.
If I'll do the demo permit, I can't get a demo permit until I abate the asbestos, but I can't.
You can, um.
Apply.
No, all you have to do is, all you have to do is have the report. Um.
Well, I have asbestos, so I have a report showing I have asbestos, but I can't get rid of it because I can't get rid of. People. So I can't do that.
I would see what you're doing, anyway, but just going to do this for free.
Yeah.
I mean, thinking.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, yeah, appreciate it. Ray, Ray, we're all done, we're all set, yeah.
You're all set for with me?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, have a good evening, everyone.
He may have good input on our project.
We're not, you're only ever the central.
I'm not sure which one to need to keep, Caroline, I'd like to.
Okay, the, the most recent one, that the one you have is split, I think it's what you, the doctor, I guess what, that's the most. I did, I did give you, um.
There.
Copy. Print out all the, this was the roads, like, who's responsible for what, according to.
Want to hear the little compact, quickened? Okay.
The email, like, not print out all of those.
Yeah. What are we saying?
With his narrative, and just so you know about the rules and the list.
That you've not found any record, recorded documents transferring ownership of any roads from the Techlar Federal Department Forest District property.
What are we doing?
So then.
Okay, so we should give this presentation.
We'll think of taking the time, tough, uh, to follow after the last project, but. I'm a name, Sandra Camp, I grew up in New Jersey, I'm sure. Uh, I'll just give a quick background of myself and then talk about the project. So, grew up in New Jersey, I went out to school, studied engineering, and did R S C at school, I became an active military officer. As a territory for the army. Uh, after the military, I began real estate development. Uh, focused on housing development, stuff on a lot of affordable workforce housing. Uh, then our most recent little project is a, a built. We, put that building, that's our registered, store building. We apply for tax credits from the entry housing. And, uh, spring, we should be starting construction, there's a unit, affordable housing, build. Also put a coffee shop in the center. Office space, and that's right. Main street of that town. Uh, so this project is, uh, approximately seven hundred acres, we are currently in our due diligence period. Um, what has been conveyed by the sellers is that the, uh. The plan has, uh, previous approval for. That's approximately five hundred. So. Us to, if this development is possible, uh, anything that you would ask of us to proceed with this project. Uh, my approach to development anywhere in New Hampshire is working with the town, not against. I don't wanna build something that the town doesn't want. Uh, that I want picture, but. It, it's in. It, it's not a conflict for us. So. As much as I can, at the beginning here, figure out what, what you all would like to see and be able to approve. Uh, that I could take that into consideration.
This is only, only conceptual tonight, you understand that, right? Okay.
Okay, so, um, just, um, you're aware, it's not. Just need your, please, and it's not. So confusing up there. Okay, so, um, drawing the interactive maps, you know, or text map. This is only a portion. Uh, but this is where those twelve unit buildings, you see those small, um, yellow buildings, this is where there are gonna be six. Of these twelve unit buildings, and right now they have two built and one under construction. It's sort of stuck. This is, um, but the land that was used to support diversity, um, includes this piece right here.
Are you talking about one fourteen?
It, it says one fourteen, but really that's a map number.
That's okay, I'm just trying to relate what just.
So, so the, the block, it's highlighted to the left. And then these kind of follow a stream, you know, wetting streams, but. Then these combined are supporting the good density, so. They're kind of look like, part of that things are included there. Um, so I don't think that's a veil. Although, you know, Heidi, Heidi is a very, uh. Flabber and turny. And she did put the words convertible and something or other in there, which. Made it unclear to the rest of us. Uh, uh, when I first started, I was told that's. It was seventy-two.
Carol, can you explain to us what you're talking about here, so everyone else?
Okay, see all the red highlighted stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, the red highlights the all supports, there are seventy-two units that are approved. To be built. Right here. There's six, there is gonna be six, twelve unit buildings there. Two of them are constructed already, one right here is under construction. It's not completely. So because, because, um, there were seventy-two units. Were approved and can be built there. That they each require a certain amount of, where a quoted acreage, to support those seventy-two units. And so. The red. The, the area that's highlighted in red is the land that is supporting those seventy-two units.
All of, all of the red.
Yes.
And how does that relate to what's here?
Some of them are missing here. So I just wanted to make sure that.
We just, yeah, we just don't know where the overlay is, yeah, how? This is the loop right here?
Okay, think, think of this big loop, this big loop right here.
Okay, so, so we can relate it by that.
Yeah.
It might want later, what else?
So, so, using way of translating it, this is, we wanna look.
Yep.
So, it's, it's talking about.
This is a little retention.
That's in the middle of it, on the, on the top.
Retention pond is right there.
I barely see it, okay, I know it's beside the road.
It looks like.
Like most of what? It looks like most, yeah, but it looks like most of this development in the red is what you're planning on using for future basis.
Well, no, just here, it's on the bottom.
Well, if it's the loop right here, if this part of this loop is this part, would I assume it is?
We, we thought that over, so.
The portion that's in the red is, uh, just at the bottom of the map, which is future base twelve units. It borders, it's right above the, the scale. That's what's overlapping in the red.
This here is this here.
Very, very important, these buildings are right here, see this?
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
It's just this part right here.
Clearing up in here, and then, that goes around the corner. So it comes off, up in, comes up and then, okay, go come off on this angle.
And, uh, just so I can explain our, our concept, I know, but, uh, so. To orient Woodland Loop is the, the circle in the middle here. Um, the, how we're oriented, the, the right half of it is what's closer to, uh, the main street. Uh, that's not included in my project, it's all built out already, the existing, uh, building, the paved road. The left half of it, uh, of Woodland Loop is dirt. Of the whole road, dirt path. Uh, so along there. It, again, very initial conceptual, uh. Plan, but our thought was, there seems to be a lot of density around Woodland Loop, so. In keeping with the characteristic of the neighborhood, we would focus the more multifamily, uh, type buildings in that area. So we'd be putting the twelve units, and they're actually, they're shown in, uh, pretty faded out here, but. Shown on, uh, the previous master plan, but, but a couple of twelve unit buildings are really kind of on there. Uh, and then the four unit buildings on the other side of Woodland Loop. Uh, so that would be mostly multifamily, the new road, uh, which would be down down the road. But, road is in line with what is shown on the master plan, uh, approximately. Road is in line with what is shown on the master plan, uh, approximately, uh, and that would be almost all single families up there. That would be to, you know, provide some, some spacing, minimize impact, so we're not building, uh, multi-family. For reference, those single families are on. Roughly half acre lots, obviously, the area.
What is your, what is your timeframe for something like this? Can you?
Um, in an ideal world, we would, uh, purchase the property, uh, this winter, we would go through our design. Work, uh, and entitlement process, you all throughout the winter, um, and then be able to pave Woodland Loop and start on some of the multifamily along there. Sometime, maybe next summer, then I don't know how many type of things. And then we would do it in phases, build out buildings as they're sold, uh, be able to roll the capital into future phases. I would envision doing, you know, having Woodland Loop built out in roughly two years. Uh, once that's close to complete, then we would look at that new road that loops around, uh, build that and then. Sell those single family lots.
Well, because this is. Already part of an approved subdivision, am I correct that the water and sewer has already been approved and, and?
I believe so.
Yeah, I mean, if it's already been.
I believe Wall Street is on that list.
That's what I was wondering, that's my question.
I could check on that before I say yes.
Okay.
But I think pretty sure it is.
I, I think, I think you're right.
No, it is, it is.
It is, okay, it's on that, okay.
That was one of the bigger ones we wanted to find out today, was the, the water sewer availability, sellers have communicated that, but.
So, right, and, and just because water and sewer is available, but I mean, there's a pressures to the tank. None of the hydraulics or anything like that's been done, so. Even though there's water available, but I, I know with the elevations and stuff like that. Whether that's going to come out, there is a tank over there, but I don't know where the tank is in relationship to this. And how all your elevations are going to work.
Okay, um, the other thing, or the water tower is up there, let me see.
Yeah, I can, I can orient you, it's right kind of where this compass rose is, in the middle top, the arrows roughly in that spot is where the water tower is sitting.
Okay, so, so one thing about the water handle. Is that when I started here in two thousand thirteen, um, we learned that, um. That they never followed through with actually deeding the portion of the, either deeding or getting a formal easement. To the town or to.
The water tank.
To access the water tank, so even though it shows up on the tax map, as if it's part of town property. That was something that Rick Elliott kept promising to take care of, but never did, so.
I don't believe it's on the parcel that I'm reading, unless.
Not in this box, in the original. Carol?
Yeah.
The original box, I'm not in this one. Tank.
Yeah, I don't believe it's on, if it is, I'm happy to give.
This thing right here that comes up, that's where the water tank is. And it's part of this right here, so we are probably. Anything for an easement, but. He's going to give us a deed, I think, but. So if he would show up, show them, you know.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so this is where. A part of the view, this is where the water tank is, and this is the lot right here, and actually this could be red as well. Because there was never a deed for this plan and how it needs. Water tank is very good.
But to answer your question, um, we started talking at Verizon Engineering, and they are taking that for the, the road. Station in their compound to get those.
Don't really know, you don't need to bone.
This is where the water tank is.
Right there.
Yeah, thank. It's past the death, we're getting ready to like, oh, yeah. Carol, I'm going.
I know, I'm just finding it out, I'm like.
Tank doesn't work anymore, Ford, we have that for you.
Um.
Are you aware the, uh, development agreement that's on file, the registry?
And the.
Are you purchasing the? Think they call it excess land?
I'm purchasing this five lots. The, the notable ones are this large, uh, one that on the. Satellite map is the one fifteen on it. That's right there, they're fifty years, that's where we're planning all of our units, there's a couple smaller lots back in there.
Okay, and I believe it's four oh eight?
Yes, four oh eight, so.
And you're purchasing that one? Okay.
Yeah, but what I'm bringing on this conceptual plan is only on, it's good, it's not on that four oh eight lot at all, it's only on that.
No, but the four oh eight lots is part of the development agreement, supports the one fifteen lot. So you're buying that and it, and it, now, you realize that that was put aside as green space. Five hundred and thirty-eight, is she? Yeah, okay.
That's when they want to sell the fourth room. One time, we saw them.
There's some great mountain biking.
It's wet out there, too. We're ready for the forward, we're ready for first light.
That could be a drop or your fires, yeah.
So you had problems with forest ridge with the stormwater runoff causing. Causing issues for the neighbors down the road, so we are going to take a hard look at all the stormwater drainage, anything to develop.
Okay, so what he's talking about, you know, this.
That's the phone. It's tough to get on, it's on a grid, it's moving.
Maybe some, yeah.
Probably didn't need it, that's wrong.
People down here.
I'm aware of the, uh, for water management. Yeah, outside of what's, what's outlined there, obviously, engineering.
The intent is the whole project, I mean.
One that I'll mention that wasn't explicitly listed in the, uh, the master plan is, uh, speaking with the HOA, it sounds like their current clubhouse is going to have a capacity. We're proposing to do a, a second clubhouse as well.
Yeah, and you also have to be a place for trash. Cause the trash compactor, that is over. Trash compactor, I can just, uh, I see it's right here.
Originally, there's supposed to have been a emergency exit off that property, coming down, coming down off of, uh. Maple Street, now it's a thirty-foot gurum in front of it, so you can't do that, it's a town water pool, it's right under it, full of trash. Supposed to have been a gate, they were looking the old record, supposed to let the emergency gate be for fire or something, emergency, come up that way, actually, on Maple Street. For emergency only, that never transpired either. They, they filled up on it, about thirty, forty feet above the Maple Street end, on the end. I mentioned, town never did anything about it. It had four bound units in there, without, on the one road coming out, if it was a big emergency. That's what we're going to, that's what we could, we could end it, but have to look at it, find another way to get out of there. So you're looking at changing this by. Twelve units because of red spaces already committed, you've got twelve units in it.
Uh, we can rearrange it to.
Rearrange it.
Nice thing here, you have, I'm interested.
You, you have plenty of open space, so I don't know why you would have to need that, you can change your open space. And you only need so much of it, so, and it looks to me like you have a lot of open space.
Any questions? Hearing questions? Uh, so you probably know that there's, um, a road, or two, actually two different road bonds up there that the previous developer had. And, and I don't know what this, whether they went, uh, will go with the land or they'll be. Exiled before transfer, um, but just so you're aware that, that there's bonds related to the two. And, and I don't, I don't know if you're buying them, I guess you're not buying the pines. And you're not buying the one next to it, and I believe that's, that's the development that's set.
There must be some sort of homeowner agreement, I think, is the, what percentage, because they all use it to get up in and stuff like that.
No, no, there, there's, there was a construction bond.
Right.
Town required for the road, for the construction of the pines, and maybe the one next to it before it too. Because.
Forest garden?
Forest garden, is that what it's called? Forest garden, um, because of the. The chair re-rationed by the, so, so it's not the homeowners association, it's the homeowners association road. But it was born with that developer, and you're not buying that land.
I'm not buying anything with buildings, right?
With buildings, so that, I guess that's irrelevant.
But.
That's what you might want to realize is, going from the twelve hours going in. That road is to all people, it's in its grade, you know, to the foot and winds up, of course, that one bankrupt, it never did. When did the road pass once, it probably wired it in now, never get, never get that. That's the original body filming. I wasn't judging it.
I would assume that wouldn't have nothing to do with the project either.
Road going into it.
We'd have to be clear about who owns the. The roads that aren't planned and.
But you're going to do, you do, you'll find out what's. The, the bonds, the bonds to be recorded somewhere, should they, or they're recorded a, as a matter of a town record, or they're recorded as a matter of?
Bonds don't get, um, they don't get bonds reported.
We did get a copy of the bonds, though.
Get a copy, yeah, in Korea again.
Yeah. I, I believe they were on the pines, but, uh, again, that's something I'll. So much to see if we get that cleared up.
Yeah, and talk to David.
The roads is one that, uh. We were at the same time, figured out. Who owns the roads, obviously, our proportion of Woodland Loop, which area that we want to build on, will obviously behave that, right, it's on. But it is a separate tax lot. So, shed any light on.
Thank you very much, I think that's where we're going to try to search, uh. Because, um. We don't tax for the road. Um, but the path or road initially was under Dory, that Jamie O, our, always been, going there. Dory O and G, and all. Then he ended up putting the mortgage on a portion of it, he's dead, he's not there, that went to TB day. Um, and then, did it go to New Jefferson, or didn't it go to New Jefferson, it depends on who you ask. So. It's kind of a, it's a big deal, um, who's going to be responsible for that, the important part of the road that's not always being taken care of by. Either the master association or the junior association. So that would be a big deal for you, because you'd be there with.
I, uh, previous conversations, I picked up the.
Someone mentioned a, uh, master plan, do you have a copy of the master plan, this?
I could share it, I don't. It's from, uh, eighteen eighty-six.
I think I, I think I gave it. Pretty, pretty thin. Very thin.
Basically just a map with a couple of roads, and then it's big blocks that say.
Yeah, 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 you sent that out, right?
Yeah.
By email, I remember reading that.
Did you read the email?
What?
That's it right there?
Yeah.
Well, I got the, that's, that's the master plan.
Well, there's a small text thing. Okay, there's this thing, it's before you. Although I kept getting in trouble with, I mean.
Is that right? Sorry.
Need one comment? Back in the nineties, whatever was being discussed, there was a lot of talk about providing. Either an easement or at least public access to some of the trails that are on your non-developable land. If, if. In doing this project, if there's any way you could work with the town to. Provide access to the, these three primary trails in my mind up, that one is to first ledge. One is up by the water tank, it goes to second ledge, and one is, goes over from Forest Ridge. Below first ledge over to campus road property, that's either called the tow road or the hall road, but it's the old lumber. Falling road, um, all three of those are used for either hiking, mountain biking, both. The intent was to, to, to secure access to those back in the nineties, and instead this conservation easement. Is what was approved and, and what was discussed never came to fruition.
Reason why, I talked to the commissioner, go through their property. Talk to Major Butler.
I'm not sure that that's the case, but there is a road and access that was over to the Snowville Trail. On the spot property that is the one I'm talking about.
If the other three had decided, well, Australians maybe told that the block.
Encourage you to keep that in mind if there was any provision that could be used, you know, allow for public access to those like the trails.
And I grew up thinking the, I love the outdoors, look.
One time, it's also reported, some of the trails, from the one, then go right across, something for a reason back, like I said, now, somebody's left it in here.
But yeah, I, I'd be happy to throw that.
Yeah.
You said, were you a sole owner, or are you?
I'm a sole owner, I have one, uh, partner who's got quite a bit of life development experience, it's there on the. But I. Team mentality, military, so.
Anyone have anything else?
Good luck with this project.
Yeah.
Me, I'm one great.
Uh, if I may ask, on the utility side, that's, was one of our larger concerns, is there a way we can confirm? Uh, the availability of that water and sewer project that's on the list?
You have to talk to the administration about that.
Yeah, like, um, we can have that discussion with Ray, but, um, when we did the calculations for water and sewer capacity. We took the developments that had been approved already, that had been closed out, and forest. So it was four hundred and ninety-five. So the four hundred and ninety five. Um, send me a, requesting um.
Or it's like, I'm gonna have voted in, so if, if there's a document somewhere that says.
The best thing to get him is that the memo from Ray, I believe it was to the board, it might have been to Cabrino, actually it might have been to Butch. Um, that, that lists the bested projects. And I believe it lists how many are built. How many are left, or might just say what it's.
That was from two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah. Yeah, so it would have been to either Butch or, or the board. But he doesn't buy.
Can you peek in your stuff too, and I'll look in mine, I, I just have so, so many. I'm trying to think of what I do. I mean, I have some places that I know that I can look for. Um.
I, I bet if you asked Ray. He would have that, you know, organized file electronically, you could email it to him in five minutes. I will, I will look for it. You think it's twenty eighteen?
I haven't calculated. And it's going through.
Should be. Which ones are best and which ones aren't.
Yes.
I, I can remember you guys voting on which ones.
Right. Without looking through a year's worth of minutes. And try to find the most efficient way to find that. He sent us a memo, we improved it, the memo would.
As, as long as it gets something though.
Yeah.
What he's looking for.
Yeah.
Send me the email, we'll tell you get that.
Great.
Y'all heard that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, have a nice evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Couple of questions on mobile homes.
Yes.
Where the mobile home, mobile home park.
I have, the mobile home situation has caught up. I have three uh mobile home parks. The, you know, off even, off even. And the, the first question I have is um. Well, certainly the first situation. First situation is, we have um, a combination of mobile homes and cabins in the house. And one of the associated lots has two mobile homes on them that are in rupic. And so the question is, um. They cannot find a mobile home that's exactly the same size as what's there now, if you don't make them those sizes. So, um. It's now an approved um business, I think. May have been.
What happened with Green?
So, so is it, um, if they wanted to replace the mobile homes with. Either a slightly larger or slightly smaller mobile home, would they have to come, they wouldn't have to come for site plan review, we're trying to encourage them to replace the old, yup, home. I think we've had this discussion before, but I couldn't find my notes on it.
We've made people come in and do that before. We did it with um Roger, Marion Roger Untune. At their place, and there was another trailer out back of there. So I don't think they owned it, but there was two trailers up there that we made, they had come for site plan. And it wasn't, it wasn't a big deal, like it just came in.
Thought we've been letting them replace them. Close, they're close, last couple of times.
So what if, so what would be close, like, if it's ten feet longer, or is that too much?
Well, we, we know, we just changed the ordinance regarding mobile homes, does it meet? Does it meet the requirements as far as lot coverage without a waiver or variance or anything?
But if, if I might, if they can, if they can fix the old mobile home and run down to land, they can replace it with new one. If it took to be a setback, shouldn't have any problem. They have to go to different setbacks, what's rented, then there could be a problem.
Well, let's just say it need, it barely needs the setbacks, I mean, it could be smaller. But would I be treating it like a whole new thing, so say if it's, um. I think it's in the general use, so fifteen, I don't think it would need any of the setbacks.
You don't think it'd be in the setbacks?
I don't think it would need the setback requirement.
How they put it, there, there would no setback can you put a bit?
Right, we don't wanna have a situation where they're further in the setback.
More than ten.
Right.
Yeah.
So if they could replace it with a slightly smaller one, even if it's in the setback.
No. Good, technically under.
Trying to figure out.
Yeah, definitely.
We're talking about if it's already in the setback.
And you make it a little bit.
Make it smaller and lessen project, I believe, that. You get a benefit?
Can't expand and not conform with yours.
You're talking about shrinking, shrinking.
If you're shrinking it. Then I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, if it's eight, eight feet in line, we're not gonna say, oh, you can make it five feet in line.
Then you still, if it run down, if you three years of your bill, it takes five.
Well, I don't wanna suggest that.
No, I'm, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say that.
Well, we'd have the same, we'd have the same question because they can't find the same mobile home to replace it with.
As long as it's the same size, they put it.
Okay, but.
They're not, they're not building them the same size, that, that's, all three of them have found, you know, I told them if they replace them on the same size, they could do it. And they have all come back to me saying, we can get one slightly smaller, they can get, you know, like ten feet smaller, and they can get them bigger, but they can't get enough.
Smaller would be better, bigger would be expansion up, more conforming, so.
A little wider.
It just, it's just, um. You know, with the mobile home, the um. You have two dinky little mobile homes all beat up. Yeah, do we want to make them come to your site plan, and then a variance or setbacks?
I would say just a land use permit myself, because when they just, if they're gonna make it more conforming, why, why make them?
If they're gonna go smaller, yes, but if they're gonna go bigger, no.
Right.
Okay, so smaller would be a land use permit, bigger would be they have to go through all of it.
Right, that's what I.
I would say, I would say, if it's bigger, but, but conforms to the setback requirements, I would say just land use.
Right.
I'd say if it's bigger, and the old one didn't conform, and the new one is less conforming, I'd say site.
Actually, probably need a variance, just not very.
But they need to come to site plan first, right, to get a variance?
No, be good.
You go to CBA first?
CBA first.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, so if it's smaller. If it's smaller and it's still, it's in the setbacks, so what's, what's the?
A land use permit.
Land use.
Just a land use permit, okay.
If it's bigger and.
Right.
Not within the setback, still a land use, still a land use permit. If it's bigger and less conforming, then they need a variance.
Okay, so then the other thing is that now when you get a new mobile home, you have to have a pad.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Perfect.
So we're still okay with putting a pad, so it's the same situation, the two mobile homes are gonna make them slightly smaller. Um, but they're gonna have to have a pad, so.
They want.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, it's still just a land use permit, okay. Um, good, so then the second question I have is, um, the mobile home park. That's uh, there originally were, this is pre-zoned, so originally there were twelve spots. And for years, there have only, have been fewer than that, um, at that particular park.
Carol?
Site plan, I'm thinking site plan review to come back because they have abandoned the use, it's been more than one year. That those sites have not been filled, and now they wanna fill them, um, with new mobile homes.
But is the, is it conforming if they just put the mobile homes back?
Well, I said, well, I don't even know what size they, it's been that long.
One of the mobile homes was, one of the, one place was a house there before, not a mobile home. I don't know if you knew that or not. That's the old root property, it's below meeting with three, is that what you're talking about?
I'm talking about Route three.
That, it was originally a house there, a street, a street bedroom house, an old rocky place, they tore down, put a trailer there, replaced the house. It was, then they had, they came with a planning board to get approval, so many units, they put in that property, believe it or not. There's so many house units, they came with them, with them on the house that they were gonna put on, they came with the planning board and did it.
Well, can't have a record of it.
Is there a record of a planning board approval?
Pre dates, I think, second plan.
Well, he said they came for.
He said they came.
I would not have bought it, they did, so it was.
My record of it.
What would the name be, so a lot of these things that you.
LaRue?
It was LaRue that bought it.
It was a lady.
Another guy that.
Is that next to Roger Thompson's?
Right, correct.
Yeah, so it was the.
Where LaRue's old place.
How you spell LaRue?
Was it LaRue, maybe LaRue.
Mayfair.
Yeah, I thought that K O A was buying that.
That's what they came into, yeah?
Yeah, it came in last year.
They didn't do it.
And we, we agreed to talk to them about that.
Somebody else.
That's why I think we updated the ordinance.
Okay, so then the, the um, third situation is. Uh, four mobile homes, uh, one demolished, wanna replace that one, they need a pad. They, and so the same situation, they, they don't have a setback problem. Um, but. They can't get a mobile home the same size as the old, and they were just demolished like last year. So, um. So if it's, if it's, when there are four mobile homes there, so this is a mobile home park, so it's a business use. So can they replace the missing mobile home with one smaller or the same size?
As long as it meets the setback requirements, yeah.
It meets setback.
Or a larger one if it meets the setback requirement.
Yes.
Without site plan review, just the.
Plan review.
Yeah, just the land use permit.
So long as it doesn't, I mean, that would be my concern, if, if they're. Encroaching further on the setback, that's a problem to the neck of your body.
I mean, that doesn't mean the spirit of the ordinance.
Right, if, if it's just larger, but it still meets the setbacks, I mean, do we really need to look at it?
Well, then add more than five hundred feet in. Yeah, it's not even, doesn't even trigger a site.
Yeah, okay, good.
Carol?
Thank you.
The cabinet is in the front, there was a big three bay commercial garage there before. They were taxing the ground, but it was taken out. It's worried about any oil tanks in the ground, they've been taken, they've been removed. They're taken out back in nineteen.
You're talking about, which?
Same lot, trailer back, little cabin in front. There was a three bay garage there, the brutal ran a big, had a big workout. That's exactly, that was demolished, that's why, and getting the oil tanks never taken out of the ground, so you know. That was a big hole there before.
Okay, but they're never come for site plan review anyway, if they're gonna replace those, put those back, they have to come to see you anyway. Because that has, those, those, the use for those additional files or whatever, these numbers that are missing. They have to understand.
The reason I mentioned that was, I wanna make sure you do the oil tanks and take it out of the ground.
Make sure you bring that up in the front plan review for. I wanna know.
In fact, with the trailer down, with our eight, with our eight potato pot, they don't link it with that. There's a big hole, ready to go up there, all went along, make a big skating rink. They feel when, when they put the tow line in, sixty eight, they feel that up in all the rubble, they get in the tow line.
No, any public participation? Any other business?
Do we wanna look at the minutes?
Oh, yeah, gonna be back to the minutes. Meeting is for August twenty third, twenty twenty three.
I don't need that.
There's so many. They're in the original part. There's so much.
I don't think I was here with it.
Yeah, you were, so you could go home. Don't even know where they are.
It's the only time it's fire, it's my way last today. Fire line blew up when that hit it.
Oh, yeah?
We had a, we checked front seat rest, the one up there, there's a line going in, had a, the bike truck, they had a pub terminal still.
So I'm gonna take a vote on these minutes. Anyone have?
Chair.
No, no one has a coffee.
Thank you for your approval. I'm sorry, then.
All right, all, any discussion?
I'll second that.
All, go second it.
Okay.
All right, all in favor, aye aye?
I'm saying.
No, Jake, can you do your favor? It looks like it's here, I tried to see, the acre's still open. Can you see the?
Five after nine, they were out of there.
No.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.